Hello again, everyone, and welcome to Clarksville's Political Forum. I'm Van Stokes, your moderator for today's session. And on behalf of Leadership Clarksville and your Clarksville Area Chamber of Commerce, we're glad you could join us today. Once again, today's forum is coming to you from the facilities of the Mass Communications Department here on the campus of Austin Peay State University. Our forum is intended to give you, the voters, an informed choice when you go to the polls on November the 6th. Today, we're going to have the opportunity to talk with candidates who will be on the ballot November the 6th for Ward Number 7 of the Clarksville City Council. They are Mr. Jim Mann, Mr. Travis Holloman, and Mr. Joe Wyant. Now, in a moment, they will each have two minutes in which to present opening comments from their seats at the table. Following their opening remarks, we will then turn to our panelists for questions. Joining us today are our panelists, Mr. Jay Alberta, Mr. Travis Holloman. Excuse me, I said, Mr. Travis Holloman, that is one of our candidates. I'm talking about our panelist, Mr. Lee Erwin. That's what happens when you rush back from lunch sometimes. So my apologies, Lee, Jay Alberta, Mr. Lee Erwin, and Mr. Jimmy Settle. Now, each candidate will be given one minute to respond to each question in a rotating order. At the conclusion of the questioning, each candidate will then have two minutes in which to present closing statements. Our timekeeper, once again, for this session, Ms. Yvonne Pickering. The city council is comprised of 12 council members, each representing a different ward of the city. Members are elected to a four-year term. Now, the city council votes on city ordinances and resolutions governing the city of Clarksville. It also approves the budget for the city, and it sets the city property tax rate. Council members approve changes to city policies as specified in the city code. The council is also responsible for adopting potentially far-reaching policies and ensuring that those policies are indeed followed. Each council member is appointed to serve on one or more committees. The issues deal with taxation, safety, and services to an ever-growing community. Let's go now to our candidates for opening comments. First of all, we will hear from Mr. Jim Mann.
First, I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce, as well as Leadership Clarksville, for sponsoring these forums. My name is James T. Mann; most people call me Jim. I was born and raised in Clarksville; I've graduated from Clarksville High School. Clarksville has always been my permanent home of address, although I have lived for several years in Columbus, Ohio, when I was in graduate school, and also in Northern Virginia when I served in the military. I am now retired after spending 31 years here in Clarksville at First Federal, First Savings and Loan, and then Savings Bank. While at First Federal, I served as chairman of several nonprofits during my years there. In particular, I was the district chair for the Boy Scouts, as well as the area chair for the Middle Tennessee Council. I served for 24 years on the school board of the Clarksville Montgomery County School System, and spent several years of that time as chair of the board. In the mid-'80s, Dee Bose and I founded Leadership Clarksville, and I continue on the board. I served on the board of the Clarksville Area Chamber of Commerce, and was chairman of that board in the early 2000s, as well as chair of the board of the Economic Development Council. I'm very happy to be here and be a candidate for city council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we will hear from our candidate, who I erroneously introduced as a panelist up front; that is, Mr. Travis Holloman.
All right. First off, obviously, my name's Travis Holloman, and I'm running for Ward 7, City Council. I'm a lifelong resident of Clarksville; I've been living in Clarksville for all 30 years of my life. I work down on Riverside Drive with a family locally-run business as a real estate agent. I try to stay very active in the community; I've done a lot of volunteer work; I've been CAPACMA-Lumina Association President, Vice Chairman of the American Red Cross here in town; I even just go up and down the road picking up litter, just because I feel like it can help our neighborhood. A lot of the goals that I really want to see for city council, if elected, is better infrastructure development, focusing on downtown development as well, and city council cohesion. The thing about the current state of our political affair is, it doesn't matter who wins, I want to work for them; I want to work for the city, and I want to work for Ward 7 residents.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll hear opening comments from Mr. Joe Wyant.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. I am 44 years old; I was born and raised here in Clarksville. I am married; I have three sons, ranging in ages from 20 to five. And, like I said, I also have a 12-year-old in there. I have practiced law here for 15 years, and I have lived in District, or, sorry, Ward 7, for 28 of those years, 28 of my 44 years. I have watched the city council through the last several years, and I just felt that I could always make a contribution in a positive way. So I'm running, and I'm open to several things. I would like to see, first of all, the panhandling law that is enforced. If we cannot enforce it as it is presently written, I would like to change that so that it may be enforced. Second, I'd like to see a bench and a shelter on all the city bus stops. Third, I'd like to see the city and county governments work together a little bit more. Thank you.
And thank you very much, gentlemen, for those opening comments. We will now turn to our panelists, Mr. Jay Alberta, Mr. Lee Erwin, and Mr. Jimmy Settle, for questions for our candidates. We will begin with Mr. Alberta. If you will direct your question, please, to Mr. Jim Mann.
Mr. Mann, to take a look at both your ward, as well as the city as a whole, what is your number-one priority for your ward, and what is the number-one priority if elected for the city itself?
You know, I've thought a lot about that, Jay. I think both the ward, as well as the city, number-one priority is how do we deal with growth in our community? How that growth affects our tax rate, how it affects our infrastructure, and how we handle that primary issue.
Thank you very much. Mr. Holloman.
First off, for Ward 7, I believe the main thing would be infrastructure development. You're looking at, especially like on the bypass, Edmondson Ferry intersection; we're currently putting in a stoplight out there, and I think that's a step in the right direction because it's quite a pain to turn left onto the bypass from Edmondson Ferry. So for Ward 7, I feel like we're going in the right direction. For the city as a whole, it's definitely just planning for the growth as fast as Clarksville is expanding, and focusing on downtown.
Thank you. Mr. Wyant.
Yes, I will echo what Mr. Mann said. Growth seems to be an issue around the entire city. In Ward 7, you have Highway 48, then you have the 41A bypass, then, of course, Madison Street. Those are the three main roads; I suppose we could throw Highway 12 in, too. But most of those are state roads, and so the city and counties' hands are tied a little bit as to just being able to say, "Well, this is what we are going to do." But there are, of course, city roads that, of course, touch all those, and so there may be an occasion where we could put up a few stop signs, a few more stoplights. I mean, that takes a lot of time, but I'd like to look at all the avenues, all the possibilities. But certainly, growth is the main issue, probably everywhere in this whole city, but certainly Ward 7.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lee Erwin, you have the next question, and it goes to Mr. Holloman.
Mr. Holloman, one of the hottest topics that's going to be on the ballot for November is consolidated government. So could you tell us about your thoughts on the city and county joining government?
Well, first of all, it seems like a pretty good idea on paper, but the charter commission, which I actually have right here, is 88 pages; I mean, it's pretty thick. And from what I understand, it doesn't look like the government's going to get any more efficient, because when you try to combine governments with consolidation, the idea is to save money. And if no one's going to lose their job, or they're not going to try to phase out some of those issues, then this really kind of defeats the purpose.
Mr. Wyant.
Yes, the folks I have talked to are not for it, and it's pretty much a moot issue to us sitting here today, because this is, of course, going to be decided at the ballot box, at the very same time that you are going to vote on us. And I have not talked to anybody that can fully sit down and have a conversation with me and tell me five major things out of this charter, for instance. Nobody seems to understand it in the way that an informed voter should understand something if they're going to vote for it. Certainly, I have looked at the charter; there are holes in it, in my view, and, of course, I'm an attorney; I look at things a little bit more stringently. But I don't think it's going to pass, and I think that it's going to have to have a little bit more explanation if it ever does pass.
Mr. Mann.
Consolidated government is going to be an issue to be settled by the voter. It makes very little difference whether we personally support it or don't support it. I have read the proposal; I've heard a presentation on it. There are several concerns that I have with it, but, again, my concerns may or may not be the same concern as the individual voter. I think the individual voter is going to have to look at this consolidated government proposal and decide in their own mind whether or not it's in their best interest and in the community's best interest to vote for it, or to vote against it. And I think that in pass, it's passed twice within the city; it has never passed at the county, and I think the board that developed this proposal is hoping this year to sell it to the county residents.
Thank you very much. We turn next to Mr. Jimmy Settle, who has the next question for the first response from Mr. Joe Wyant.
Thank you. Mr. Wyant, there are, for Clarksville, some public amenities currently on the table for consideration at City Hall. They range widely from a multimillion-dollar sports complex at Exit 8 to a new road called the, we're loosely calling the Northeast Connector, near Exit 4, which comes with a privately-funded convention center component. All kinds of big-money projects are on the table for consideration, or in various stages of design and consideration. What of any of these proposals that you probably have been keeping up with are needed first in the city of Clarksville?
Well, you did not mention the one that I would like to see, and that is a multi-level parking garage in the downtown area. Certainly, I like the idea of the conference center out in St. B., that corridor that you mentioned. I think that'll probably happen, but we have got to have a parking garage in the downtown area. And I say that because of all the fabulous businesses that are springing up, certainly the restaurants that I see night and day filled. I challenge anybody to go downtown on a Thursday, Friday, or Saturday night and try to find a parking place within a block of where you're trying to go. You know, there's a park down there now, the Downtown Commons. I'd like to see that first, then, the parking garage. The conference center's going to happen, I believe, but I want to see the parking garage.
Mr. Mann.
You know, all of these issues are faced as, how does the city government, and how does the county government raise money that is not tax-related? And that's primarily through attraction of visitors and tourists. And so, we are trying to do things with these event areas to attract people to come here so we have more sales tax, and we have more hotel/motel tax to help us amend our local property taxes. I think all of them are good, but I think that we need to, between the city and county, really sit down and do some in-depth, long-range planning and goal-setting for the city council, and come up with a scheme to enhance the quality of life in both the city and the county.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Holloman.
The convention center that's off of Wilma Rudolph, I think, is a pretty good idea, and I'm not saying that we should focus on it, but it does have its benefits. If you look at the surrounding counties, having events there could bring in a lot of revenue. But like Joe said over here, for downtown, the parking garage, it's a very good idea, and I think it definitely helps boost downtown businesses, because, let's face it, people don't really like to walk. Part of the thing that I like about downtown, and this is just my opinion, but when you park downtown and you have to walk through downtown to get to your location, that, to me, means more than the easy access, just because I like to look at all the buildings, and it's just taken in that atmosphere of what downtown is. But the parking garage would definitely boost business.
Thank you very much. Let's go back to Mr. Jay Alberta for the next question, and if you will direct that question to Mr. Jim Mann for the first response.
Mr. Mann, we've talked about, just a little bit in your conversations, about the panhandling issue that we have in our city. We know that there are some ordinances on the books right now. Do you think they're stringent enough; should they be changed? And is there an overall problem, since we have Clarksville's growth that has gotten so bad? Is there something else that we need to be looking at to resolve this issue?
I think that you can pass all the rules and regulations against panhandling that you want to, and you can arrest, fine, whatever you want to do. But we need to look at the underlying causes. Why are these people coming to our community? Why are they actually having to do panhandling in our community? Is it they don't have enough money? They don't have a job they can get in our community, or what? But we really need to not look at the event, but look at the underlying cause of the event, and until we do that, we are not going to solve the problem.
Mr. Holloman.
For the panhandling problem, it's pretty simple. If a person's trying to panhandle to get an income, and then you're to arrest them or to fine them, it kind of defeats the purpose, because how are they going to pay that fine? Right now, Clarksville's got jobs coming in from everywhere; we've got LG, Handicut Tires, the Google Plant, server plant that's coming up. I think there are pretty, quite a bit of opportunities for job employment, and I think we should look at ways or reasons why they're coming to Clarksville.
Mr. Wyant.
Well, I have actually thought about this a lot. We just need to move them out of the intersections, really, the panhandlers. We know why they're there usually. They need money; a lot of times, it's drugs and alcohol, in fact, probably most of the time. You know, we cannot make blanket statements, but I want to move them from the intersections onto the private property, and then it's the private property owner's choice as to whether they also send them on down the road. But, you know, the law, I have looked at this, of course, as an attorney. The problem is, you cannot just say broadly, "Okay, you cannot ask for money anywhere." But it looks like, in the case law I've seen, that we could say that it's a public safety concern for them to be in intersections. Plus, it scares people; if they have their windows down, they don't want to be faced with an aggressive panhandler. And, of course, it looks bad.
Thank you very much. Let's go next to Mr. Lee Erwin for the next question, and it will go to Mr. Travis Holloman for the first answer.
Mr. Holloman, a two-part question here, and quite simply, what qualifies you to be a member of the city council, councilperson, and why should people vote for you?
Well, first of all, I've been very active in the community; I always try to give back. I've been in the political field for a little bit now, and I feel like I can work hard for the residents of Ward 7; I feel like I can work hard for the city. I think the agenda's pretty good; it's there, and that's... I really want to work hard; I want you to vote for me, and I'm willing to come to your door. I'm going to knock on your door; I'm going to ask you for your vote. I'm going to prove it to you how hard I'm going to work for the city.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Wyant, how about you?
Well, I am, as I said, a lifelong citizen of Clarksville, and lived in Ward 7 most of that time, since I was 16. And I have practiced law here; I have the education. I have, most recently, served District 4 there on the county commission, so I know both of the leaders here, the city and the county mayors, for instance. And I've gotten to know a lot of people, and I see how things work. And I want to work hard, of course, just like Travis wants to, and certainly, Mr. Mann. It's a privilege to be up here with both of them today; we're all good fellows. But I also went to Austin Peay, and I think that has to say something. But basically, I just have the will to serve. I've learned a few things in the last 44 years, and I would just like to offer that to my fellow citizens.
And Mr. Mann.
I think it's quite obvious that of the three, I'm the oldest, and I think with age also comes a lot of experience. As I said, I've spent 24 years on the school board. My background is mathematics and banking, so I have a very strong financial background. In mathematics, one learns to analyze problems, and study, and really think in depth to arrive at best solutions. And I just think that with my background, that I still have valuable skills and talents that can be put to use by the city, and by our community, and by Ward 7.
Thank you very much. Let's go back to Mr. Jimmy Settle for the next question, and it will go to Mr. Joe Wyant for the next response.
Thank you. Mr. Wyant, frequently, we hear of the perception that there is divisiveness in our current administration at City Hall between the mayor, and certainly, some of the council members. And sometimes, if you attend some of the city council meetings, maybe you even see a little evidence of it, if you watch closely enough. And I guess I just want to hear from you, if elected, what can you do to resolve some of that divisiveness that, at least, is perceived to exist?
Well, as I said, I know both of those people, the city and the county mayor. And assuming that the same city mayor is elected, or let's say, re-elected, you know, they're both brilliant people. When you step back and look at this, they are really both wanting some of the very same things. And I have noticed that, in fact, it's pretty obvious to me, once you get on the inside and you look at everything. I would like to be that liaison between those two individuals even, but certainly the council and the commission. I know how both bodies work, both legislative bodies, and I would like to offer the time; I would sit down and have a conversation with both of them, or members of both bodies to solve any problems. But yes, they have got to work together, but I think that they can, and they have very often.
Mr. Mann.
I think before you can solve the problem of working together between city council, city council and the county commission, we have to solve the problem just working together within the city council. I think that with my 24 years on the school board, we presented a uniform front on all issues. Once we voted on an issue, the issue was settled; we didn't bring issues back up. And I think the city council has got to learn to work together, and once we work together, then we start working with the county commission. Yes, I know all the people that are in leadership are running for leadership, because I've worked with them all in my past years.
Mr. Holloman.
Well, within the city council, it's obviously factioned, and best solution I could say is, it doesn't matter who wins the election for mayor or for other ward races, if I'm elected, I'm ready to work with them; I'm ready to move the city forward.
Thank you very much. If you have just joined us, you are watching Clarksville's Political Forum, and we are meeting with candidates who will be on the ballot November the 6th for the Clarksville City Council, Ward Number 7. They are Mr. Jim Mann, Mr. Travis Holloman, and Mr. Joe Wyant. Let's go through another round of questions, if we can. We'll go back to Mr. Jay Alberta, whose question will go to Mr. Jim Mann.
Mr. Mann, if elected, the city council members are broken up in different committees to work inside the city. Which committee would you, if elected, want to try to get that position and work with a particular committee? Which committee would that be?
Well, you have city council members that serve on the long-range, on the planning commission, regional planning commission; you have city council members that serve on the street department, and I think those two areas are very, very vital for the future of our communities. And so, those are two that I would be interested in. But again, with my background, I think I could serve well on any committee that the mayor chose to put me on.
Mr. Holloman.
Well, obviously, I'd like to focus on downtown development, so I feel like that committee would be best for my views, but any type of committee that they put me on, I will serve due diligently.
Mr. Wyant.
Well, I do not really know all the committees, but I would probably want to be on the one that has to do with the fire and the police, probably public safety, I suppose, is what you'd call it. I know a lot of those folks, in both the fire and, as I said, the force, and so I would like to get involved with that as much as possible.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lee Erwin, you have the next question, and it goes to Mr. Travis Holloman.
Mr. Holloman, let's talk about public participation right now. How would you propose to stay connected with the residents of Ward 7, and also work to increase their involvement in the planning for the city's future?
That's a very good question. First off, I think just more involvement within Ward 7 itself, to get a better feel of the residents that live there regarding opinions and active activity. One thing I've noticed, just from speaking to the residents, it seems like the more people you know, the more they're willing to go out and meet their neighbors. Like, "Oh, yeah, you know, I know Mr. Johnson up the road." And then, they talk about, "Oh, you know, I talked to Travis Holloman." It creates a greater community. The internet is a very powerful tool as well; like, you do Facebook Live events; there's a website called Nextdoor.com, and it helps keep the community together and informed.
Mr. Wyant.
Well, I do not really know what I would do, except certainly be open and available to the people of Ward 7. They would have my cell number, my website address; they could call me anytime. But I would certainly be out there among the people; I would be visible. You know, there isn't any way to hide, I suppose, when you're serving in this job, and I wouldn't try.
Mr. Mann.
I think that one has to represent your ward, but one also has to represent your city and the whole community. And in that, I personally would rather see that we had televised planning meetings and issue meetings as we're trying to address issues before we vote on things, so that we actually, as a body, rather than individual ward people, as a body, get opinions from all over the city on issues that are important to the city, as we're making those vital decisions to move the city forward. I think that's very, very important to our community. We've got to develop a unified field of community. We aren't North Clarksville; we aren't South Clarksville; we aren't, I'll call Sangio, but that's mostly county. But we need to have a unified community.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jimmy Settle, you have the final question from our panelists. It will go to Mr. Wyant for the first response.
Thank you. Mr. Wyant, with respect to our statewide and even international identity in Clarksville, it seems to be a foregone conclusion, at least for those who keep up with such numbers, that... that at some point in the foreseeable future, we are going to pass Chattanooga in population and rise in the rankings among the state's elite cities. I guess my question for you is, if that were to happen today, are we truly ready to fully claim that distinction as a much more advanced urban area than Chattanooga? If not, what will it take to get us there?
First of all, when I heard the news that we would possibly pass Chattanooga, I just didn't believe that. I still really don't. I was just down there, you know, weeks ago, and I just don't see the size. I just don't see the people here, you know, that I saw there. They have a lot of natural benefits there, of course, with the river. And of course, we have a river. But they also have, you know, Lookout Mountain and all these tourist attractions. We don't have that. But, you know, what we do have is cultural, I should say, cultural things that we can offer, you know, through Austin P. here. You know, we also have the Roxy. We have a lot of beautiful things here. We need to utilize the river more. And I would like to also see more done with the, you know, the cave, Dunbar Cave. We have a lot of work to do, though, you know, before that ever happens.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jim Mann.
I think it scares me, because, you know, we get that, we'll be that way, because Clarksville is the only incorporated city in our county, where Chattanooga has other incorporated communities in its county. And that makes a large difference. I'm not sure that we're prepared for it. I look at the fact, just look at our road structure. I have a map of the county that dates back to the early 1900s. Those roads that are on that map are the main roads that we use to travel today. We don't build subdivisions with parallel roads to existing roads. We have done very little to plan for growth, and it scares me. And I think that our major issue over these next five to 10 years is going to be to really plan for the future.
And Mr. Holloman.
I think right now, the city is doing a pretty good job, as far as infrastructure development, to plan for the planned growth. If you look at the way Nashville is growing, being only 45 minutes away from Clarksville, it has quite a bit of a pill, especially when you take property prices into consideration. But with the widening of, like, 41A and Trenton Road and Warfield, I think we're prepared for it. And it's better to be prepared for it than to not be prepared for it, because no matter what, it's going to happen.
Thank you very much. That concludes the questions from our panelists for our candidates here. We now turn to the closing comments, which will come in reverse order from the opening remarks. Each candidate will have two minutes in which to deliver closing comments from their seats at the table. We begin with Mr. Joe Wyatt.
Thank you very much. This has been fun. This has been informative. I learned about my competition here, what is on their mind. You know, what is on mine is that I have lived here many, many years, as I said, and I have never had the opportunity to step up and help make the laws in the city. Certainly, on the county, recently, I did. And that was great. I was on there for two years. But I have lived, as I said, most of my life in these city limits. And, you know, Clarksville is a bustling city now. There is a lot going on. Growth is happening faster, perhaps, than we would like to see it and faster than perhaps we're prepared for. But you go downtown, and this is what I want to leave you with. You feel an excitement that perhaps you have never felt. You know, when I went to Austin P., it just seemed like everybody left on the weekend and in the summer and at Christmas time. This was a very lonely place, a very lonely town. There wasn't any business at the local restaurants. Even Johnny's closed for those two weeks. But there's a feeling, when you come here, that something's happening. And I just want to be in on that a little bit more. I could never see myself running for a second term. I'd like to be judge one day, for instance. I mean, I am an attorney. But I want to, you know, get a term under my belt. I would like to serve the people in this way, and I would appreciate the opportunity for that.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll have closing comments from Mr. Travis Holloman.
Well, thank you for having me here today. One of the reasons I think you should vote for me is because I'm active in the community. Austin P.'s my alma mater here. I really love Clarksville. I'm going to prove it to you. I'm going to work really, really hard. And if elected, I'm going to work even harder. But just vote for Travis Holloman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Holloman. Our final closing comments will come from Mr. Jim Mann.
Again, I've been in Clarksville now for the final time for over 40 years, and I've seen a lot of changes in Clarksville during that time. In looking at this, I really thought of some questions that I wanted to ask myself and ask the public. You know, without growth, our alternative forms of income, property taxes will increase. The shrinkage does not help any community. And so we need to look at ways of developing alternative forms of income. That is primarily going to be the sales tax as well as the hotel motel tax. And so we need to do those things to make our city and our county to continue to be an attractive site for visitors and for retirees. Why would someone retire in Clarksville if they aren't military-related and they aren't coming from an existing business? Why would someone move to Clarksville? What do we have? We have a beautiful river. What are we going to do to keep it beautiful? You know, people at Southern Hills don't really understand the attractiveness of that farmland that borders that part of this city. What would happen if that were no longer farmland, but that were developed? And it could happen. So we really need to look at where we are, what we want to be when we grow up. And I really think with my past experiences and my interest in our community and my desire to see the community grow and be better, that I have skills that will help us move forward to a bigger and better community. Thank you.
And I want to thank you, our candidates here today, who will be on the ballot for Ward Number 7 in the Clarksville City Council on November the 6th. Our thanks to Mr. Jim Mann, Mr. Travis Holloman, and Mr. Joe Wyatt for sharing their time and their thoughts with us today. But more than that, gentlemen, I want to say thank you for being willing to serve the city of Clarksville as an elected official. I want to remind you that early voting takes place October the 17th through November the 1st. The location is at Election Commission Office, 350 Pageant Lane, Suite 404. And of course, the State General and City of Clarksville elections on November the 6th. What makes a democracy work? Well, one of those things is the vote from each and every one of us. Thanks also to our panelists today, Mr. Jimmy Settle, Mr. Lee Erwin, and Mr. Jay Alberta. Gentlemen, as always, thank you very much. And thanks again to our timekeeper, Ms. Yvonne Pickering. Thanks also go out to the Mass Communications Department here at Austin P. State University for helping to make this broadcast possible. And a special thank you to the staff at Leadership Clarksville and your Clarksville-area Chamber of Commerce who made this forum possible. Until next time, I'm Van Stokes. Thank you for watching.